Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of October 25th, 2022. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Before we open it for public comment on agenda items, I would like to welcome, happily welcome, our three student reps to the Board of Education, Emily Nielsen, Christian Nolan, and Simone Gabriel.
So which one of you prepared the opening marks in behalf of the students?
Speech.
He's just kidding.
There's a student report coming up soon, though. You can prepare for that.
Okay. So I will open it up to public comment on any of the agenda items. Okay, seeing no public comments, I'd like to start with our consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through eight presented to the Board at this meeting. Second.
Questions or comments?
For the public, the consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes of the last board meeting, CSE/CPSE placements, approval of an updated 22-23 substitute listing, approval of unpaid or additional hours for staff members, approval of three overnight trip requests, one science research competition in January, and two wrestling team tournaments, one in December, one in January. We're approving a team merger for girls' ice hockey with various Westchester schools, and we're approving a contract with New York State School Boards Association for Policy Services.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question regarding the wrestling.
Okay.
I know the last couple of years, we haven't had these items because of the C-word. How many, I don't recall ever seeing a request for wrestling, that's why.
So I know these are overnight trips that they had previously gone on prior to COVID. I think they're very much like invitationals. It's not an entire team goes. I think students sort of earned spots to be invited to these. Typically, they would happen, the approvals would happen right before the events, but I know that Mr. Cantrell is trying to get out in front and make sure that the Board is aware that these are potential trips that are upcoming for wrestlers.
Do we now have any students?
I think it depends upon sort of who qualifies at that time.
Okay.
The wrestling season hasn't started yet, so it'll be dependent upon the number of students who qualify, who participate.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. So now we start with our presentations.
All right. Our first presentation this evening will be our high school reopening reports. I'd like to invite up Mr. Mello and Dr. Payne. You guys could take notes on how he does.
So first of all, thank you very much. I didn't have the opportunity over the summer to thank the Board and Dr. Luft publicly for appointing me as the interim principal here at Putnam Valley High School. So kind of the way that this goes is I come back from vacation on a Friday night, I get a call from Dr. Luft, says, can we meet on Monday? I meet on a Monday. He talks about the position at the high school that Dr. Seppi was leaving, and would I consider looking at this in the interim. We had a great conversation about a bunch of different things when it comes to like leadership and schools and all that. And of course, I was very excited about the opportunity to do that. And then at the end of the week, I take off on another vacation. So I think the following week, there was a board meeting and the appointment of me as the interim principal at Putnam Valley High School. So I want to thank the Board very much for giving me this opportunity. It's a long journey in education, and it's very satisfying to know that Dr. Luft, the Board, Dr. Doherty, you have all, you know, seen a lot in me, and you believe in me, and I really appreciate that. And I'm very excited about being able to take us on a nice journey for quite some time. Hopefully, I can be here for a long time.
Do you remember your quote was during that meeting? Your little slogan?
I sometimes talk too much, but what was it?
All in.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So you're right. I basically, you know, at the end of our meeting, I told them that, that I'm all in. I don't view this as, it's an interim position. I'm here for the short term. I'm all in. I'm going to do everything I can to support the students, the staff, and the community here in Putnam Valley. And that's what I meant by all in. Like, you know, that's it. I'm not looking at trying to keep a seat warm for somebody. We're going to do whatever we can to support everybody and bring Putnam Valley to another level. And we'll talk more about that as we go. Along with this transition, that was quite a surprise in the middle of the summer, the Board, Jeremy, in our conversation on that Monday, talked about the prospect of bringing Dr. Payne over to the high school to try and, you know, bring some continuity and everything. And I was really excited about Dr. Payne being able to come over because it gave me somebody that I was familiar with and that was familiar with the students. And I'll just allow Dr. Payne to say a couple of words.
And I'd also like to thank the Board and thank Matt and thank Dr. Luft for being supportive to me, to saying that, you know, I would be a support to Mr. Mello. Being able to transition with the students over to the middle school has been a blessing. I feel like I graduated with the students. And so far, this school year, I feel like our transition has been very well. And I can say it's our transition, myself and the students over to the high school, and they have made a beautiful transition to the high school.
Yeah. And so one of the things that Letitia and I had to do, and try and imagine like the summer here in August where I'm on vacation, I know Letitia had vacations, and she's still the assistant principal over at the middle school, you know, trying to work in that capacity, and she's trying to work with me here at the high school. I was trying to work with, you know, Dr. Seppi, who was also trying to work in her new district. She's wearing a couple of hats. Letitia was wearing a middle school assistant principal hat, as well as a high school assistant principal hat. So I give Letitia a lot of credit for being able to kind of navigate both of those things because she cared about what was happening at the middle school, still cares about what's happening at the middle school. It's amazing to see Dr. Payne outside when dismissal, and all these kids like coming up to her, and they're so excited to see her out there. It really, like, it warms my heart to know that she's made those connections at the middle school, and then to see the kids at the high school and their parents at back-to-school night, so excited to see Dr. Payne. So she worked really hard in like a dual role over the summer. And I just want to make sure that I gave some kudos out to Dr. Payne in that because we had a brand-new team here at the high school, right? We're transitioning. I know I was an assistant principal, you know, here for three years, moving into the principal role, but it's a new role. There's new responsibilities. There's a lot of different things that you have to learn, you know, with that, right? A lot of different responsibilities with it. So to be able to start to work with Letitia and kind of forge this new partnership, this new team, was really satisfying, you know, because I felt like, all right, we have a team, and we started to work on our vision. We'll talk about that vision in a minute. And then I'll just let Letitia talk about the eighth and ninth grade for a second.
One of the key things I saw coming in was how welcoming the staff was, how welcoming the front office, the teachers, everyone was welcoming. But not only that, the students were so welcoming. We have the Big Buddy program that's here, and they were able to meet over the summer. So I met them over the summer through my transition. They get like three days of training over the summer to be able to greet our freshman, our freshman students, and be able to navigate them through their high school time here. As the students were coming in, if they needed time to read over their schedules, they were present for them. They're even present for them when it comes to community lunchtime. There's time for them to meet with ninth through 12th graders. When I asked the freshmen, you know, how do you feel being here? They enjoy the freedom of being able to be with their friends from ninth through 12th grade, finding their own niche over the first couple of weeks of school, and being able to say, you know, if I need help or I need to reach out to somebody, I have a big buddy. Kudos to Ms. DeCiana and Ms. Penta for working with the Big Buddy program, to be able to help those students to navigate with our freshman students.
Yeah, we have, we have three seniors that are on our Board this year, the student representatives. And I cannot say enough about how our senior class is, has really taken a leadership role in, you know, demonstrating like, you know, what it means to be in the high school, right? They've set a great tone for those students, which has led to a really, really good start to the school year. Had a lot of conversations with staff members, with the students, and there's a lot of excitement about this school year. And I think a lot of it has to do with our senior class and just, you know, how excited they are about being back in school without masks and all those things, and then being able to just be high school students again and lead in that way. So really, really appreciate everything that you are all doing as a senior class, because it's not just for you. You're setting a great tone for everybody else in the building. We have a couple of new teachers here at the high school. Elizabeth Palermo is our new math teacher. Sharon Lum is our Mandarin teacher. Judilcia Perez is our social worker, and Nick Lapidula comes over as a campus monitor. So a couple of new faces in the high school that are giving us a lot more flexibility in a lot of the things that we do. So Letitia and I, our work over the summer, we really like talked about goals, right? We had a retreat as an admin team, and Jackie did an excellent job of setting up a protocol that allowed Letitia and I to really work together for the first time on something real academic and really visionary. I believe that you need to have goals that are understandable, that are doable, and like not too complicated. I think oftentimes, people set too many goals, things like that. So we really wanted to try and narrow things down. So one goal is empowerment. One of the things that we've recognized over the course of this pandemic is that I think a lot of people started to rely on a lot of other people. And that could be in any realm, whether it was students to teachers, teachers to teachers, teachers to administrators, parents to teachers, parents to administrators of school district. There's a lot of that. And it's like, how do we get back to people taking control of their own education, their own lives? How do we get them to find answers? It's kind of like IB stuff. How do we get them to find answers when they don't know the answer without just relying on asking somebody else? So that's really where this empowerment thing came from. And along those lines, we kind of challenged the staff to re-envision their role in the classroom as a leader, not necessarily as a teacher, but as a leader in the classroom. What does that mean? I have a couple of bullet points up there. You know, you're not in charge versus responsible for those in our charge. So if you think about yourself as a classroom teacher, you're responsible for those students in your classroom, and you're responsible for every single one of those students in your classroom. And as that leader, you need to get to know every single one of those students in your classroom, right? By developing those personal relationships with those students, they're now going to feel much more comfortable to be able to perform in class, ask questions, whatever it might be. It ends up empowering them to start to take control of their leadership. Manager versus leader, right? We're not managing the students in the class, we're leading those students in the class. Not responsible for the job, but responsible for the people who do the job, right? As a classroom teacher, I'm not going to sit here and give them all the answers. I'm responsible for them and helping them to figure out how they can find the answers. And then the last one, don't ask someone to do something you wouldn't do. I think this is a key characteristic of leadership and something that often gets lost. You know, if I'm going to be a leader, if I'm going to be the one in charge, I've got to be willing to get down on the floor with them and, you know, do the nitty-gritty, dirty work that, you know, everybody is expected to do. I use a simple thing.
So Mr. Mello was actually helping to sweep up after color wars. Because if anyone was ever here for color wars, you know, just breaking down all of that was a lot. And he got right down in it, and he was helping to clean up too. So we're not above that.
No, and it's, the thought isn't anything about being above it or below it. It's like, hey, there's an area that you can help out, then you jump in and you try and help out in that area. With the teachers, I talked to them about, okay, we all have like policies about cellphone use in the classroom, right? We don't want the students to use a cellphone when we're, when we're trying to, you know, create an educational environment in the classroom. So if we understand that, really what we want them to do is we want the students to be present, right? I'm telling you, I don't want you to be on your cellphone. I don't want these other distractions. I'm asking you to be present, right? And now let's hold that true ourselves, right? So if we're having meetings, if we're involved in stuff, we expect that you are present as well. So recognize that, understand it, right? So if you're on your cellphone when something's going on, you're basically saying, well, I don't think this is that important. And that's the message that you might be sending to other people that you're around. So the message was, let's be aware of that piece, right? Don't ask the students to be present if you're not willing to be present as well. And I think it's, you know, it's one of those things, little things, little steps that you can take to set yourself up as a leader in the classroom so that that student and everybody in that class feels like they are a valued member of that class.
And not just to be empowered, but to always also have a voice, that we have many individuals in our community that have ideas to share. So if you look at the slide, you'll see that there are many different committees that we have where we have students, we have teachers, we have parents being represented. We meet monthly with our building emergency response team. We meet monthly as well for our MTSS team, which I'll talk more about in a few slides, which is our multi-tiered systems of support. We also meet monthly as well, well, five times a year for our building steering committee, where we have, this school year, we've decided that we wanted to make sure we have representation from ninth through 12th grade, so that all students are represented on our building steering committee. The DEI committee meets as a district level, but we take that commitment very seriously within our building. So we've talked to students about how well we can represent them within the high school. And so we're now looking at some of some student-led clubs that would make sure that we are representing everyone throughout the high school. We have over 27 clubs and nine honor societies that we have, and you'll see some slides about that. We also have our IB team, where we meet weekly to make sure that the progress of our IB World School is forward movement. We also have our department coordinators that also meet monthly to make sure that we are ensuring that each of the departments, their voices are being heard. We want to make sure that everyone is represented well. We also want to make sure that at the district level, for our advisory council, that we have educators within our building also represented, as well as parents from our building also represented on the district level team, as well as our administration. The program, Today's Students, Tomorrow's Teachers, is near and dear to my heart because I was a part of Today's Students, Tomorrow's Teachers when I was in 11th grade. Natalie Doherty was able to, Dr. Doherty, was able to bring this program to the Putnam Valley School District last school year, and we helped to bring in about 12 students into student leadership movement in the middle school, and they're now in the high school to represent today's students, tomorrow's teachers. It's a non-for-profit program that helps to support students of color becoming teachers in the classroom so that they can see representation in the classroom. I am the product of that. I was able to go to college. I was able to start to observe in classrooms because of that. Our students are so excited now that they have an opportunity to go and visit colleges, to see what opportunities are out there for them, and to know that when they graduate, if they should stay in the program and they should continue to move forward in education, they will also gain a scholarship to go to school. Not every student is going to be able to have that opportunity to go off to college. And before they get there, they'll have many opportunities to see colleges, to experience what campus life is like, and to be able to think about being in education. We all that are in education want to be able to see that students have representation in front of them. And so this program offers that and has been offering that for over 25 years.
Here we have a couple opportunities that some of our clubs have been involved in this year. This one, our history club, was able to go to Carmel, I forget the park. Do you remember the memorial, Vietnam Memorial?
It's Putnam County Memorial Park.
Okay, Putnam County Memorial Park. Excellent. And so they set up the traveling wall there, and our students in the history club were able to go and help set up that traveling wall. And they were also, they do a whole name reading thing of the individuals who gave their lives for our country in Vietnam. So some of our students had the opportunity to read a bunch of those names. So really cool experience for them to meet Vietnam veterans. Do any of you want to make a comment about, you know, Emily, you were there, was there anything that you witnessed, or?
Yeah. So last year, we had gone to West Point, which is obviously amazing. We're so lucky that we have such close proximity to military bases. But this, and that was fun, and it was a great time, but this was just so much more fun. And that's such a horrible thing to say because I was one of the students that just like read the names of all the men that gave their lives. But it was just so much more eye-opening, and it was such a good experience to see that, like what really happens. I read for 10, I read names for 10 minutes. Like, I never knew how many people really went into that. And I got through three pages, and that's nothing. It was like books and books of names. So it was just really amazing that we got to go. Yeah.
Yeah, and the feedback, that, I mean, very emotional kind of situation for our students to be involved in, to kind of understand or get a deeper understanding of, you know, what the Vietnam War, at least some of, what some of that cost was, you know, especially in lives to our country. Another thing that just happened this weekend is our Science National Honor Society did a town park cleanup. So Mr. Nyinen was able to take members of our Science National Honor Society to the town park, and there was this amazing cleanup. And I know that they ran into somebody there that, you know, wanted to reach out to some local media to possibly do some sort of story about what they did in the park. And I know a lot of our students, whether they're younger, you know, spent a lot of time in that town park. I think we're pretty proud of that park. Some summer work, you know, this is great, the extended school year program. I actually got to get in there with these students over the summer. And, you know, we worked on building some bird feeders together. So I have a background in construction, so for me, it was like really cool to get in there and use some of the power tools, and then work with them in, you know, demonstrating how to kind of put together these things, glue them together, and, you know, screw some of the pieces together. And then they didn't have time in the summer to paint them, but their class went into the art room, into Jen Armbruster's art class, art classroom, and they were able to paint those bird feeders at that time. What we're looking forward to is them, you know, hanging the bird feeders up, and then maybe even like reporting back on some of the things that they see, some of the birds they see, you know, using those feeders. We had investigation into middle years program. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. SOMOS World Language, the comprehensive classroom, and this is ongoing training for our world language, K-12, correct? Six twelve, six, okay.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve. But, you know, great connection between the high school and the middle school to really, you know, set a sound foundation in, you know, how they're crafting their pedagogy when it comes to, you know, the world language classroom. So really, really proud of that. Dr. Payne talked a little bit about freshman foundations, and that worked over the summer to set up those first couple of days of school and worked with like big buddies to really come up with a program to welcome those freshmen into the school, but also to work with teachers to go over strategies to use with students who are new to the building, to help them, you know, if they're having difficulty, to help them out with how to adjust to the high school. So that was freshman foundations. Dr. Payne talked about big buddies. And then there was the, you know, typical summer curriculum work that happens throughout the district. This year, so here's our schedule. We did modify our schedule again. So since we've gone to the block schedule, I think we've modified our schedule every single year since we've gone to the block schedule. But it's a work in progress, and we keep looking at it. We keep recognizing that there might be little areas, little tweaks, things that we can do to make it even better. So if you look at our schedule, Monday is a nine-period day. It rotates between an A day and a B day. One Monday will be A, the next Monday will be B. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are block days, rotating between an even block and an odd block. That's been standard through last year. And what we added in the morning is a 10-minute student support period. So from 7:48 to 7:58, all our teachers are available for students to go and meet with to talk about a bunch of different things. What we've seen from that is students visiting teachers, seniors visiting some of our English teachers because they're working on college essays. They're talking about getting letters of recommendation. You know, that's kind of like the senior aspect to that. But then we've had other students that are visiting math classes to get that extra little support because they have a test later in the day. They've visited guidance. They've visited the nurse, TOK, Theory of Knowledge, and then clubs. They've also been able to touch base with some of their club advisors during that time, especially when we're talking about the Theory of Knowledge students, that's TOK, because they really don't have a lunch. You know, they have about 15 minutes for lunch, and then they go into their Theory of Knowledge class. So a lot of our clubs operate during that lunch period. So this allows them to go and touch base with clubs, honor societies that they're involved in so they can stay connected and involved in all of those. So we've found that the 10-minute period, our original vision for this was to allow students to make that early morning connection with staff members in the building. But the other thing that we've noticed is that our lateness the first period has dropped dramatically. So where students were caught up in that line of cars getting in, and, you know, you'd see a lot of them coming in, you know, between two to five minutes late, because we've added that 10 minutes in the morning, it's practically eliminated that lateness in the morning. So now you might see that one or two students, usually seniors, who drive in, and, you know, they might be the ones that are a minute or two late, but it's cut down on, say, that, you know, every morning last year, we probably had 25, you know, to 30 students that were in that, you know, two to, let's say, 10-minute lateness in the morning. So it wasn't what we were thinking when we threw that 10 minutes in there, but it seems to be working out really well. The other thing it affords us to do is we see a lot more students coming into the cafeteria in the morning, and so hopefully, they're getting that nutrition that they need to start the day. A couple of new courses. Our first one, The American Experience, really isn't necessarily a new course. We've been running humanities with Mr. Lethrip and Mr. D Gregorio for a long period of time, maybe 15, 16 years. But they looked at the possibility of making that into a Dutchess Community College course so students could get DCC credit. And so they investigated that last year. And this is one of those ways where we can get seniors who aren't in, say, like an IB class their senior year, the ability to challenge themselves in a college course and receive college credit for that. So great vision by Mr. Lethrip and Mr. D Gregorio. I'd love to be able to sit here and say I'll take credit for that. But they saw, and they saw that, you know, these are students that might go to tech, you know, in the afternoon, and they're going to this course to get that DCC credit. So it's really meeting the needs of a different population of students, and we're really happy about that. Also, we have Mr. Fiore, who is here. He's got a real-world finance course. And I know this is something that the Board has talked about for a while, you know, how important it is for our students to really have a solid grasp of the finance world out there. And I think I speak for a lot of people. There's probably most of us would love to go and sit in Mr. Fiore's class. Talking about Bitcoin and, you know, all these things that are out there now that I think we hear about but might not really know fully about. And that's just one aspect. I love the last line on here, Mr. Fiore, put in here, "Real-world finance delves into financial goals, saving, budgeting, good versus bad debt, growing wealth, retirement plans, and how to balance expenses, emergencies, and other financial responsibilities while saving for their future. Most importantly, to educate and keep students from getting caught up in the hype investments," and FOMO, which is fear of missing out, which I was like, I was like, Mr. Fiore, what's FOMO? I know, I know. I'm like the old guy now, right? I should have a better idea of stuff like that. If my daughter's watching, she's probably rolling her eyes, and we all hear it. We also, IB Environmental, with our IB science classes, oftentimes, you know, enrollment goes down, up in certain ones. Last year, there weren't enough students to take IB Environmental, but it's back this year with a full slate of students in that course. So it's great to see that back. And then IB Mandarin. We mentioned before that we hired, the district hired a Mandarin teacher, a full-time Mandarin teacher. And this is great because prior to this, Mandarin was virtual. We had a contract, I think, with Bosse's, and it was a virtual learning experience for students. We now have our own Mandarin teacher, and she's awesome. She's got great energy. And that also allowed us to have IB Mandarin as an option for our IB students. So previously, our IB students So previously, our IB students, if they took Mandarin in middle school, would then have to choose a different pathway like Spanish or French Abenicio. Now they can continue on with Mandarin through the program. So it, it gives us an incredible amount of flexibility. And I definitely want to thank Dr. Luft and Jackie Levine for allowing that to happen and then the board for supporting that process. Because there's a financial obligation that goes with hiring a teacher, but it adds an incredible amount of value to our high school. The other thing I want to talk about is achievement centers. So we've had achievement centers for years and, you know, they've been good at meeting the needs of these students that might be struggling academically or socially. It kind of ties in with what Dr. Payne talks about with MTSS and we'll talk about that in a minute. But really the focus, we wanted to try and shift that focus a little bit in achievement centers to making those connections with those students, to supporting them socially, closely, social, social emotionally in order for them to feel more comfortable in the classroom. You know, so like if they start to feel valued somewhere, what are the effects of them feeling valued somewhere? So what we did is we challenged our achievement center teachers to come up with different types of opportunities for their students in those achievement centers. I think it's Mr. Scampoli, Mrs. Thornton, Mrs. Hightman, and am I missing? I might be missing. Mrs. Tarkington, thank you. And they've worked together to kind of craft different things for these students to do. So you'll see there's pictures up there. They went apple picking, right? You know, just a day out there to kind of relax, get to know one another, get to know their teachers, you know, and, and come back with apple cider donuts, which I really enjoy when they put those in the office. And then they also took them to Duchess Community College. And the thing that was awesome about this is those students came back, these are seniors that they took to Duchess Community College, they came back with college acceptance letters. So they came back with these letters stating that they were accepted into Duchess Community College. Those were our first students that received letters of acceptance. And you would not believe how good those students felt about coming back knowing that, hey, you know, maybe I'm struggling academically here in school, but there is a place for me to go, right, when, when high school ends. So, you know, it's amazing. I mean, I went to Westchester Community College for a year, right? There's so many of us, so many of our students that have, you know, you know, gone to those colleges and then been, will go on to like create things like becoming the principal of the high school. They're also planning a trip, trip to Westchester Community College as well as other things throughout the course of the year. So really like what they're doing in those achievement centers. They're kind of reaching again, another population of students and making them feel good about their opportunities moving forward.
All right. So most people know these acronyms in education, but maybe not everyone else within the greater community know these acronyms. So I always believe in spelling them out for everyone. So MTSS, you've heard it a number of times throughout this presentation. It means multi-tiered systems of support. The state is moving towards making sure that all school districts are integrating their systems, looking at not just academic, but behavior and social emotional wellness for students. We at Putnam Valley, middle school, high school, elementary are looking into making sure that we are supporting the whole child. And so with that, coming in from the middle school to the high school and then also looking at the district level team, just saying, okay, what are we doing here as a system already? What are we currently doing and how can we improve it? One of the things that I worked with the teachers to do is to look at who's sitting at the table. We wanted a student centered team, looking at who are the members at the table that are discussing the greatest needs of our students. So when we looked at the teams that were going to be at the table, we're making sure we're inviting the people that are closest to the student at the table. So in the past, they, it used to be a kind of a school-wide response to intervention, but now the key members are sitting at the table, using data of that student to discuss what are the most appropriate targeted interventions that we can use to meet the needs of them academically, behaviorally, and social emotionally. In the past, for the high school, there was something called the three-week monitoring. I said, that's awesome because now we can use, utilize that as a progress monitoring tool. So instead of that being the first meeting that we have where we're talking about a number of children, let's use it as our progress monitoring tool. So the very first meeting that we have with students, we talk about that student, we talk about what interventions are most appropriate, and then we may meet in three weeks, six weeks, or however many weeks we think are necessary for the intervention that we put in place. So far, we've had our first RTI meeting and we made progress with it. And then in the next couple of weeks, we're going to meet to see how that student has progressed. In addition to the multi-tiered systems of support, we also look within the, the high school at what services that students can do within the community. Every student, when they graduate, are supposed to have 40 hours. But through the pandemic, there were certain grades that had to have reduced hours because they couldn't go out into the community the way that we would normally do that. Most of our students surpass 40 hours of community service. However, this year, well, in the previous years during the pandemic, the students were going to 20, 20 hours. Now we're back up to 40 hours. Now our students are working with Passport for Good, which is an internet-based system where students can calculate their hours. Now, I don't want to click on that link because things like that never really work. You click on it and then it doesn't open, especially when you're a new person transitioning. Not all links work. But one of the things that we did screenshot for you is to take a look at some of the statistics where, right now, we've only been a few months into the school year and probably some of this is a little bit of last year, where we already have 1,500 plus hours of community service being conducted by our students. One of the other slides that I have is where if you take a look and you'll see from senior year, starting on your left, to freshman year, we already have a number of students building into those community service hours. And obviously, we just have our students just coming to the school building. That number is going to grow and grow and grow because there are activities that they can do within the school building as well as activities they can do within the community. Right now, we've met as staff members for Passport for Good. And what we're going to do is we're going to build up our website where it's going to show students how many opportunities there are out there. So we have parents reaching out to us. We welcome that, reaching out to us, and we'll be able to post that on our website so they'll know where to go for community service.
And just going back to that community service for, for a second, we also have, I guess we're, we're calling it right now a volunteer club. I don't know if it's necessarily a volunteer club. It's, it's run, the advisor is Marissa Tarkington. And what she's doing is, she's kind of like the liaison between the students, events that are out there, our CAS students, which is a creativity, activity, and service component of our IB program. She's kind of like this liaison between all of those. And the thought here is that, you know, she's going to be able to help understand, accumulate different volunteer opportunities that are out there. She'll work with guidance counselors. Every year, the guidance counselors meet with every individual student and they kind of go over like, okay, you know, junior year, we only got 10 community service hours, you know, let's start working on building that up. So Mrs. Tarkington will be able to work with them as well in understanding where our students are and how to then get them matched up with the community service opportunities that are out there. Coupled with this is our CAS students who are looking for opportunities to create and, and be in charge of these activities. And then, you know, they'll be able to reach out to Mrs. Tarkington, who can then get the volunteers to marry up with them so you have volunteers at these different events. And one of the things, I get contacted every year, Mr. Olivero liked this, every year, the seniors in our, our, our community, I get contacted by them because they're looking for people to shovel their driveways. And that's a, that's a major thing that, you know, elderly people have to deal with, right? How are they going to get those driveways shoveled? And I know, starting last year, some of our, or actually, it might've been two years ago during the pandemic, some of our students then started to be able to network with other students to be able to get to some of these elderly households or, or communities to be able to shovel those driveways. And so our hope is that, you know, through this Passport for Good, through what Mrs. Tarkington's doing, we can find out even more of those people that need help in the winter months when there's, when there's snow on the ground. All right. I thought this was interesting. Day one, when we were sending students off on the bus, or I think they were coming back from Bosie's at the end of the day, and there was this like massive amount of students that were, were getting off the buses and coming back into the building at the end of the day. And I'm like, what, what's going on? And there, you know, those are the, the tech students coming back from Bosie's. And I was, you know, that's the, the junior class. Thirty-nine juniors are going to Bosie's this year. And you could see last year, I have the 21, 22 numbers up there. There were 21 juniors, 21 seniors last year that took advantage of Bosie's. And now we have 39 juniors and 21 seniors over, you know, taking advantage of the tech programs. And I thought that was really, really interesting to see because, you know, there are opportunities, there's great opportunities through the tech center. And so it's nice to see that more students are taking advantage of that. I know we're an IB world school and I'm extremely, extremely proud of that. But there are other students in our, 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 our community, at our school that need other opportunities. And I think our guidance department is doing an excellent job of having those conversations with those students and guiding them in the right directions when it comes to our, our tech center and those opportunities. Our enrollment statistics, everybody likes to see enrollment statistics, but there they are up there. I'm not going to read all of them. If you want, I'll take a minute to kind of, you know, go through the total number of students. I think the one thing I'll point out is maybe last year, we had 553 students in the school. This year, we have 508 students in the school. And then here's our five-year enrollment numbers. Again, I'll let you digest that for a minute.
Current eighth grade enrollment, Dr. Luft, would you know?
I think it's actually a fairly larger class. One, I'm looking at middle school faces because I know they know the number better than me. I think it's a 140-ish, I think is what the number is. I think it's slightly larger than the outgoing class of seniors, which is 131. So somewhere around about there. Does that sound somewhat right? 143. See, I knew they know the exact answer.
That's good, thank you.
143. So yeah, definitely a little bit larger than the outgoing high school class. So the total enrollment in the building will actually go up a little bit next year. Thank you.
The other thing I want to show is this, our AP and IB examination information. Again, we're looking at like a four-year, you know, progression to this. In 2018, 2019, we didn't have IB exams. So you can see that, you know, that's not listed up there. And then in 2019, 2020, we only had IB assessments for seniors that year, and that was only in science and psychology classes. If you know IB, there's, it's a, most of the courses are a two-year sequence. So students start taking the IB course in their junior year and they'll take their assessments in the senior year. The other thing that I'll mention about it, in AP, there are exams in May. In IB, there are multiple pathways of assessments that the students take. So that's why it says assessments. I am really proud of, if you look at 2021, 2022, we dropped a lot, right? A hundred students when it comes to AP students, but we gained so many more students that are challenging themselves in, you know, courses like AP and IB. A lot more students are doing that. So here's the realization. Last May, we had 100, we had 245 IB students taking 583 IB assessments. What that means is our seniors are not phoning it in for their senior year. There's no senioritis. They've got to work through May. We had 115 seniors take IB exams last year, and that's in May. The IB external assessments are given in May. So 115 out of a class of 156, I think? So that means we had 115 seniors working through May on what they needed to do instead of kind of like taking it easy in their senior year. It's an astounding number for us and you can see the final number. Total exams at a, again, we're talking a higher level kind of exam process, 745. And now go back to 2018, 2019, when we were just AP, there were 334 exams that, that were, were given in that year. So we have increased the rigor over the course of the last four years dramatically. And it's, you know, it's increased for a lot of students. AP exams largely have been pushed down to ninth and 10th grade and the IB exams are predominantly senior year. There's a couple of courses like science and psychology where they could take it in their, their junior year. So I'm not going to go on and on about IB. We have IB information nights. Please come out for those IB information nights if you want to learn about the IB program. We are an IB world school and we are extremely proud of being an IB world school. The other thing that we're noticing about this, and I want to give Mrs. Levine an incredible amount of credit for this. You know, she came in last year and she, you know, took a year to kind of assess where we are as a district. And she got to learn about the IB program last year and she really recognized how important this is and how we can start to use this common language, not just in the high school, but we can start to use that common language in the middle school and the elementary school as well. So I know Mrs. Levine has introduced the IB learner profile in the elementary school, you know, to try and get them to like see and understand where the students are going to be when they're seniors. And you can look at that learner profile and you could think that these are not things that are new, right? I mean, caring, I think that's been in education for at least five, 10, maybe, maybe a long, long time, right? So it's not anything new, but it's putting a little bit more of an emphasis on it and making sure that you're bringing that into the classroom. So again, I want to thank Mrs. Levine for like bridging this gap between, you know, elementary school, middle school, and high school by understanding how important that common language is and how we can utilize that common language. All right. So largely, we've been talking about what we're doing. And I think this is one of those things. When you have a new principal come into the building, I was an assistant principal. I've been in Putnam Valley since 2001. And the thought could be like, okay, we're doing some really good things here. Let's just keep going, you know, keep the ship afloat and, and move along. But I don't know, if anybody that knows me, I'm not just, I'm not just like keep the ship moving. I, I like to climb mountains, you know? I think that's, that's, that's what I like to do. I like a challenge. You know, there are challenges out there. What is it, Miley Cyrus? There's, there's always going to be, yeah, another mountain, right? There's always going to be an uphill climb, right? I don't know, I apologize, Miley, if you're listening.
I think if you're going to quote Miley Cyrus, you have to sing it.
There is probably no one that wants to hear me sing. But, but here's the thing, right? We're doing some things that I think, like, I think we're doing those things really good, right? I think we've got an excellent staff here at the high school and we're good, but we're still, like, we took IB, we're still rather new at IB and we're still figuring out the nuances of this new curriculum, how to, you know, shift that down to the ninth and 10th grade, you know, especially when we talk about things like theory of knowledge, international mindedness. So those transitions are still going, right? And I put that quote in there by Dr. King because, you know, we want to be great, right? I, I think we're good and I think we're really good at a bunch of things, but we want to be great. And, you know, that's really, you know, that's going to take time, it's going to take effort, but we're going to continue to strive for that. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and your verb or create a serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. And I think we have the staff and I think we have the students here, right, that kind of epitomize that. And, and so we can be great and we have to keep working at that. And I always think this, right? And this goes back a long time, but, you know, you, you want to make sure you're good at something, right, before you start jumping into other things. And, you know, I want to be great at something, right? I want to make sure that we are great before we start just throwing other things into the mix. But that being said, I know that we have to keep moving forward. And I have a passion for IB and I understand what the middle years program can do for our district. I think one of the things that we've been missing over a long period of time is that connection between middle school and high school. I think we have a middle school that operates really well. We have a high school that operates really well, but we don't have a huge connection between the two buildings. And I look at NYPD, Middle Years Program, which is six through 10, and I see this opportunity for the middle school and the high school to really start to collaborate moving forward. And that's why I put my quirky little bridge between middle school and high school. And Mr. Christian Nolan is here. There's his artwork right up there. It's the Bridge to Tranquility. Mr. Nolan created that last year. It's our award-winning Aspire artwork for this year. But it really is, there's that bridge, right? And that's going to, that bridge is NYPD. And that's going to, that bridge is NYPD between the middle school and the high school. I'm very passionate about that. But we have to have this understanding that, you know, we want to be great at what we're doing at the high school. It doesn't mean that we can't start to introduce something else to the high school, but understand that piece, right? And I'm, I'm for it. I'm behind it. I'm saying like, I think there's a great vision here that can really bring our district together. Now, other things that we're looking at in the future, IB dance. We're talking about different ways to meet the needs of different students. You know, typically, your IB diploma candidate is probably not going to be in IB dance, although maybe they are. They're involved in IB music, and they're involved in IB computer science as ways to meet their group six, you know, HL requirement. But the thought was IB dance might reach a bunch of these students that we have that are involved in a bunch of different dance clubs in our area. They're very passionate about it. We have an incredible cheerleading program here, and there's a lot of dance that's incorporated in cheerleading. So this is a good opportunity to try and bring some higher level courses to a different demographic of students. We're also looking at IB business. Again, we talk about, you know, world finance. So can we bring in an IB course that now meets the needs of students at a higher level? IB business management. We're also looking at another IB math route. Right now, our math route is very calculus-based. IB applications and integration is more of a, it's a little bit more stats-based. Also, Mr. Fiore is looking into IB design technology, which again shifts it to a more, you know, a computer science, but it's more hands-on type program that he's looking to bring in. Real-world finance for more students. We want to get that word out there about real-world finance. And then we're also looking at CAS, which is that creativity, activity, and service. It's something that our IB diploma candidates, right now, I think we have 15 seniors that are IB diploma candidates, and I think we have 17 juniors. They take CAS, but can we somehow work that into our community service requirement and bring in those reflective pieces to that and get them some sort of CAS requirement there? And then the other one, TOK stands for theory of knowledge. And, you know, really trying to get students to, you know, understand the way that they think, how they think, and can we bring that to other people? You know, oh, I know this. Well, how do you know that that is true, right? And it gets students to really start to think about how they know, or what they know, how they know that that's true. And it really brings in a lot of different perspectives. So we're talking about where we're going. Like I said before, you know, I think we need to keep moving up that mountain or move up another mountain. You know, that's, that's what we're here to do. Let's keep climbing, right? There's always going to be another challenge out there. You know, let's go for it, and let's see where we can go. And then I wanted to show this. So Dr. Luft came to me, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago and said...
Things happen fast, right?
Yeah, they do. They do. You know, in the midst of being a new principal and doing all these things, you know, going on, he's like, can you do a presentation for the, you know, Garrison Board of Ed? I'm like, sure, sure. Let's, you know, can we do it in early, end of October? He's like, well, no, it's like next week. I think, actually, I think it was Mrs. Levine was sitting in my office. She's like, well, no, it's, it's in four days. Like, oh, okay. Letitia, we have to put together a presentation in four days for members of the Garrison Board of Education. I didn't fully understand everything about it, but it was a great opportunity for us to have an outside group that was interested in Putnam Valley and kind of show off what we do here in Putnam Valley. And I was, I mean, just that in and of itself, somebody else is interested in Putnam Valley. I think, I think we're starting to see that Putnam Valley is now on the map, and it might be for many different reasons, but maybe we're finally getting the recognition that we deserve as a school district. So it was great for them to be able to be here. It was great to be able to present to them and show off our building. And this is just an excerpt from their Board of Ed meeting, and I thought it was really important to play it. It's about a minute long. Uh-oh.
Dan?
I probably messed it up, right then.
On every vacation out of rebel home, there's someone like you who reunited the...
In Valley High School. If I were writing a story about high schools for the New York Times Magazine, I'd do a story about Putnam Valley. It's an extraordinary place. I mean, they're doing things there that I don't think are being done in most high schools, certainly not in this area. They have an international, what they call an international baccalaureate program. And what they do is, what we saw was a school where kids are really encouraged to identify what they care about. And they get a huge amount of mentoring and supervision. And some of these kids are doing, the kids seem very engaged in it because it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for them to create their own high school education and to learn how to write and to learn how to present, to learn how to actually do scientific work that is published in scientific journals. This is happening at Putnam Valley High School. I mean, I have to say, I've never seen a public high school like this before, ever. It's really remarkable. And I don't want to take up too much time. And I think maybe Carl could explain better than I can what the international baccalaureate program is.
I'll just, I'll stop it there. So you kind of get the idea of it. You know, for somebody that's been in Putnam Valley for, you know, working in a high school for 21 years, to hear that kind of feedback, what did I do? There we go. I really think, you know, my dad worked for IBM. I should be way more technologically savvy than this. But to hear outsiders talk about our district the way that they did at their board meeting, I felt really proud. And I just thought that that was something that our Board of Education, Dr. Luft, Mrs. Levine, Dr. Doherty, even our students, I mean, it was something that we needed to hear or want to hear. You should want to hear that because what we're doing, you know, you give us the leeway to be able to do these things. And, you know, that's what's so important to understand, and that's the message that we really want our community to know, that this is a really unique place. We have a lot of great things going on here, and it's about time that other people started to recognize Putnam Valley for what we are. And, you know, talk about unique, what happened to the, we lose our Color Wars?
Go for it.
Oh, there it is, sorry. Did you want to...
No, I mean, just coming into the school building, I've never, ever, ever seen anything like Color Wars. And everyone just said, just wait, just wait. And Spirit Week, you know, building up, seeing the community of the students and the staff and the buildup of how they prepared for this day. Kudos to all of the advisors that worked for each of these different grade levels. I mean, it started out with just a few streams of paper on the wall, and then all of a sudden, the whole school transformed from the first floor down, up to our front building, and students were excited. You know, it was great to see that many of our district cabinet was there to see the kids' excitement at the end of the school day, enjoying each other, having fun, building community. And to be a part of this was totally amazing. Mr. Scampoli, oh my gosh, just seeing him referee all of the circus that was going on. But it was great. It was awesome to see the smiles on the students' face, to see students that may not always be cheered on, be cheered on in the stands and feeling so excited and so proud of what they were able to accomplish on that day was amazing to see. So I am ready for Spirit Week every year.
Scamp had to oversee the most competitive game of musical chairs I've ever witnessed in my entire life.
That was, that was something...
We had to stop it three times just to regain control of musical chairs.
He did. He, you know, blew the whistle, he stopped everybody, and then reorganized that, and ended up in a really good competition. I want to, I want a huge shout out. Dan Mahoney's here right now. He and Kat Schutz spent weeks. I remember going to him, I'm like, Dan, I need to do this. And he's like, can it wait till after Color Wars? You know, because like they put on a production that was, I mean, professional level production, live production mixed in with all these different videos and stuff that students were creating in our TV production class. But Dan was in the control room. Mrs. Schutz was like out there with the headset on, communicating with him, communicating with students with microphones, students with cameras. Make, I was just like, if you saw the behind-the-scenes production that went on, and again, Dan, Dan, like, he's the man behind the curtain, right? He never gets enough credit. But what he and Mrs. Schutz did, truly, truly amazing. There is a link out there, right, the YouTube link, you know, that you can go and watch, you know, all of these things that happened during that day.
It's only five hours long.
Yeah. So, so there is, right, right.
Got a lot of commercials, right?
Yeah, you'll have to figure out how to like forward through, you know, a bunch of these different things. But, but all that being said, it was a five-hour production, right? We had, we had students, we had, we had staff members working for five hours to piece this all together. Actually, it's even longer than that because I know Mr. Mahoney was working over the weekend to create some, or to get the link up and running according to YouTube guidelines, right? So, you know, Dan was working for several hours over the weekend on that. And so, you know, I want to make sure that, that Mr. Mahoney gets the credit he is due for everything that he did to make that experience. I know, I know most of you are sick of hearing me talk. I'll just, the last thing I'll say about this, if you think about Color Wars and where it was when we started it, and I think like 2004 or somewhere around there, you know, we just had the competition at the end of the day. And it grew because of COVID, right? Sometimes there's some positives that come out of a negative. But because of COVID, it, you know, it led to this idea that we can, we can film the events because we couldn't bring all the students together in one place. And I think this graduating class, you guys should be really proud of, you know, not just like what you accomplished academically and those things, but you were part of that transition to making this a day, not just an event at the end of the day, right? And then we have incredible people that were able to figure out, visionaries, and Mr. Scampoli is part of that as well, to put it all together. It's amazing because we divide to unify. I mean, that, you know, like, that, that is unbelievable, right? We divide, we're all these different classes. You know, we're all these different colors. We're all divided during that day, but at the end of it, we're all unified because of that event. And it's another one of those things, you know, I know the Garrison Board didn't see Color Wars, but it's another one of those things that makes us a unique place that values the sense of community and is able to exploit that.
Well, a few of their parents saw it for the IB information evening when they walked in the main hallway and it was in the process of being decorated. It was a very eye-opening experience for some. So they got a glimpse of it, some parents.
Yeah, pretty amazing. So I guess that's about all I have for you right now. If you have any questions, reflections, please feel free.
I do.
If you guys didn't notice, all, all the eyes are going to instantly look at the student reps, so. If you guys have any, you don't, not obligated, but if you have anything to say, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I believe that Mr. Mello and Dr. Payne have done an amazing job this year. I really love how interactive they are with the students, and we really appreciate just such an intentional like bridge between administration and the students. And we see it between like teachers and administration as well. And I think they encourage just a really amazing community in their short time here. So I'm really excited to see what is going to happen for my siblings as they come through the high school. And I'm just really glad to have both as our principal and assistant principal.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think you guys are doing an amazing job, and Color Wars is obviously amazing. Yeah, we love Putnam Valley.
Thank you.
I think Simone took the words right out of my mouth. You guys have done an amazing job. And as Mr. Mello mentioned before, I'd like to touch on that I believe the extra 10 minutes that we've added to the day has just been a, really a great addition, especially for the senior class. There's 131 of us, and being able to meet with teachers, whether it's extra open math class or work on college essays, has just been next level, and it has allowed us to push us and grow a lot more. And I think that's a great addition.
Thank you, Christian.
To speak again, sorry. I also think of the pace, sorry, excuse me, an area that we haven't considered in that 10 minutes that is really helpful, like, I know me personally and some other peers of mine, like dropping off their siblings at the middle school in the morning, like, it's kind of helpful because I can drop off my brother before 7:45, and I have a couple of minutes to myself in the car and peace and quiet. So I think that's a really great part as well.
And for me, who has a younger sister she has to wait for, I have never been late to school. So I'm just thankful for that.
You guys are amazing.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ellen. If you had a wish list, you said you, other than building the bridge between the middle school and the high school, what would the high school need to make the IB program better?
So the first answer is time, right? You could always use time. I think, you know, one of the major components, one of the IB learner profile pieces is, is reflection, right? So every year, we need to reflect on what was going on that year. Because we're so new, we need time to be able to like talk about what happened and then what adjustments do we need to make moving forward. I'll give you an example, like one of the adjustments that we're looking at now for next year, right, we've been doing our IB science courses in one year, in a period and a half. And the IB science teachers and the students have all said, that is an incredible grind, right, when you think that your final assessments are in May. And they've got internal assessments and all these different courses and everything. So if we could do IB sciences one period over two years, we're looking into that. So that might really help those students get a lot more out of those IB courses. Like, it opens up the summer to allow them to investigate things if they want to. It doesn't require them to, but it allows them, like with their internal assessments, to choose a topic and maybe investigate that over the summer. So time is one thing. And then, I mean, let's be, money, money's always the other one, right? Like, you know, we need to continually train teachers and retrain teachers. Every IB curriculum changes every seven years, and then teachers need to go and get retrained in the new curriculum. So all that is going to consistently happen with the IB program. We're looking to add IB dance, you know, a couple of these IB programs. That also means we need to be able to invest in sending teachers out to be able to get that training so that they can come back and be able to provide those opportunities for the students. So I think those are the two major things. And then, well, you know, the other thing is, we mentioned the NYPD program, Middle Years Program. You know, we talk about backward mapping all the time. And one, you know, we've made an adjustment, I think, Dr. Luft, the middle school made an adjustment with math in the middle school that greatly opened up the IB program to a lot more students. You know, so by having, say, two sections of an honors math in middle school allows more students to have the criteria that they need to attempt IB math in junior year. So, you know, we need to keep having those conversations to understand what needs to happen. I know we're doing Mandarin in the elementary school. There's a component of Mandarin. You know, I would love to see Spanish in the, in the elementary school as well because now those students, we only offer our world languages in IB at the standard level. And if they had more of those languages in earlier grades, it would open up the higher levels in those, those courses. So again, it's those things, you know, that's long-term, right? Those are long-term changes, but not easy to do. I don't know if elementary school teachers can just easily incorporate Spanish into their curriculum, you know? But if we want to look at what would benefit our students at the high school and the IB program, it would be things like that.
The IB program certainly is a point of pride for the district. But I'm also very happy to see the enrollment in our tech center courses increasing. That's really important, Matt. There's a contingent population that does not wish to go to college, and we need to understand that and provide them the opportunity to move to the trades, which in this economy right now are about the only things that are making money for people. A plumber, an electrician, and an auto mechanic, man, call them and see what they charge. So I'm proud of that. I'm also proud of the fact that Mr. De Gregorio gave me a call to give me the heads-up that the wall was being presented. I had known about that, but I said, what's your involvement? And he said, well, I'm bringing students up, and they're going to set it up. Now, I missed the setup, but I did go there the next day. And one of our own, Robert Gillen, Bobby Gillen, and I knew him, he was two years older than me, he died in training for Vietnam. He was at a base, and believe it or not, really friendly fire put him down. And it was poignant to see his name there on that wall. So I think it's a remarkable thing that our students were involved in that as well. And that's, that's just, that's just so honorable.
Yeah, seeing, I think seeing the names on the wall really makes it real for people, right? You know, it really gives you something to identify with, and I'm sure... And I'm sure, Mr. De Gregorio, I think he talked to the classes, right, or talked to the students and said, like, hey, do you know anybody that was in Vietnam or might have passed away in Vietnam? And students, you know, were talking to their families about, hey, you know, was somebody in Vietnam? Yeah, like, my, you know, my uncles, I have, you know, two uncles that did a tour over in Vietnam, you know, they're, they're getting older. Sam, I don't mean to say you're getting older, but, but, you know.
Oh, I am.
Yeah, but, but that's, it's, it's an older generation. And, and, you know, we don't want to lose that voice, right? And so it's a simple event like that, that allows us to make that connection to a younger generation that gets to hear that voice. And I think that's really important.
It was the only war that really was never recognized or honored when the men and women came home. Matter of fact, many of them were ridiculed, baby killer, what have you. So to see the recognition now, I, I know, being a member of the VFW, it, it really is a point of pride.
That's, I mean, it's great to hear, right? And it's great to see the, the students involved in that. And the other thing about the, our tech students, a lot of them are taking IB courses, which, like, they're seniors, they're going to tech, and they're still taking, like, one or two IB courses, which is amazing also, right? That they're like, wow, you know, I still want to challenge, or this seems like just a really cool course, so I want to take it.
Let's help Dan.
Thank you. Couple of questions, the community service. I know you mentioned junior year, and you checked the guidance council check-in. What happens is, what check-ins occurs in the senior year?
So, you know, basically, that, that check-in go i- is constant. So Mrs. Targington will be looking at the list of students, seniors, to see, you know, who needs community service hours. And she actually works with Mrs. Cassone to find those students and then, you know, match them up with, with community service opportunities. It's great, Mrs. Cassone isn't, you know, she's not a paid advisor or anything like that. She's a monitor, so what she does during the day, because she's in the school, she'll see those kids and be able to grab them and be like, hey, you know, you only have, like, five hours, you know, like, we need, we need to, you know, figure out how to get you more hours. Go see Mrs. Targington, you know, go look at P4G, go talk to your guidance counselor. So we have a, kind of like a, a system now that we've developed over the couple of years to try and make sure that we're making those connections with those students who might need to, like, pick it up with their community service hours.
Thank you. The student support period, that's an optional period? Or the kids all, students all have to be in school?
So all the students, so the students are all in school and, you know, basically, you know, the, what we have is the, the teachers are in a classroom, they, they, you know, they need to be in a classroom that they, like, have their desk in, so they're there and they're available for any student to be able to come in and talk to them. We've also talked to all the students about the student support period. Guidance councils have talked to them about the student support period. Achievement centers have talked to them about the student support period. There's a bunch that are kind of like, you know, if you notice, like, somebody was struggling or, or had a question, it's like, all right, during that 10 minutes, go find, you know, Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so and have that conversation with them, you know, about, okay, you missed class yesterday, go and see them during that 10 minutes. So it's not a requirement, there's no classroom that they have to be in, but they all know that every teacher, every staff member is available during that time. So they'll go talk to, you know, club advisors, they'll go talk, you know, they're talking to a lot of people. The nurse, Jessica Wymore, who is phenomenal, she does an incredible job, you know, of making connections with students, alerting us about a bunch of different things. A lot of them like to stop by the nurse in the morning, you know, and it might just be like an SEL kind of check-in, right? But, you know, then she has some feedback that she can connect with somebody else. So we're seeing it work in many different ways.
Thank you. And thank you for showing the AP and IB exams, both.
Yeah, we, you know, I know we're an IB world school, we still value those AP exams. And, you know, we basically push that down to ninth and 10th grade so that those students have some rigorous program that they're involved in that's going to help prepare them for whatever comes next.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm, I'm so very excited about Mr. Furi's class, the Real World Finance. I'm interested in how that gets implemented. Is that simply going to be an elective? Are we going to work a way to get as many students kind of involved in the finance piece as possible on that one?
So seniors need an economics requirement, so they need a half-year economics requirement. So what we need to do is look at real-world finance and see how that fits in with the economics requirement that New York State has for seniors. And as long as it marries that, then we could say that, okay, you know, economics can transition to real-world finance, or we could also keep a separate course of economics for, you know, students that might not need or want, you know, that level of financial education. So it's definitely possible. It's a matter of just looking at New York State requirements for economics to see if they marry up.
I think it's a problem we're approaching for many different corrections, right? So we have the Real World Finance class that Keith is teaching, but we're also looking at an IB-level class that offers the same type of instruction, obviously, at a higher level. And maybe between those two courses, we can grab everyone if we're not able to capture what is otherwise structured class time, to be able to do that. We've had conversations regarding, obviously, we know that earlier in their high school experience, the better off we are, but obviously, ninth-grade students have the least flexibility within their schedule to fit something else in. So it's something that Mr. Mello and I have certainly been talking about and exploring. I think this is a great first step in, at least right now, offering a first option for it, but looking at additional opportunities down the road to make sure we're capturing as many students as possible with some sense of real-world economic experience.
And I think that's even doubly more important for TOK for all. I mean, just, it sets you up for the rest of the experience and then beyond. You know, we had a student last year, two years ago, I've already lost track of when the students graduated. That said, it was, it was the best class she's ever had. And if, if we can find out a way to get that as early in the high school experience as possible, I think that, that is, I think that's a cha, you know, a, a change. A big change agent for moving the district and the IB program. And even with outside of the IB program, just, you know, the way to go about figuring out things to, to, you know, just, I think that's so important. And I'm behind whatever way we can get that done.
I think an interesting piece for the TOK class is we know we have teachers lining up wanting to teach the class. So it's a matter of finding time in the student's schedule to make it possible, but we know we have the professional staff that's interested in tackling that material for a greater number of students.
And there's, there's also, like, another angle to TOK, when we talk about theory of knowledge. IB requires you to embed theory of knowledge in every one of the IB courses. And our teachers, you know, that have gone out for training that, you know, maybe they teach an IB course, but they also teach a 10th-grade course, they're bringing in those aspects of TOK into those lower-level courses. So even though it's not a course in and of itself, in, say, ninth or 10th grade, we're starting to see teachers use those, or those lines of questioning, you know, approaches of teaching and learning in those other classes that they teach. So that's really good. Just, like, I was in Mr. Messera's Theory of Knowledge class, and I thought this was fascinating. Like, you know, what sound does it, does, does a dog make when it barks? And he started out by looking at, like, you know, like, you know, what, what, what does the word look like in a different language? And then what does it sound like in a different language? And it sounds different in different languages. So how do you really know the sound that the dog is making is the real sound that the dog is making? I mean, that's fascinating stuff, right? So then you have to, like, come up with your idea of, of what you believe, and you have to defend that idea. So, pretty cool with dogs barking. I mean, you know, it's rough, isn't it? Like, rough, right? I didn't know it was different in a different language, but it is. Different languages, different cultures, it sounds different. It's really cool.
I have another class-specific question. The American experience with the DCC, is that, is that projected to be a three-credit class?
Oh, I'm sorry.
A three-credit class that?
Uh, yeah, so DCC credit, yeah, three-credit DCC class, correct.
And that satisfy, will also satisfy the government and politics requirement?
Yes, yes. And, and their 12th-grade English credit as well. So it satisfies both of those.
And then I had a micro-question on the bell schedule. Is, are we considering the student support also homeroom, or are students throughout the entire building for that time period? To kind of build on what Jeanette was asking about.
So we, we, like, looked into aspects of a homeroom. You know, so like, if you require students to go to this one classroom at the beginning of the day, and this is something like, several of us, and I talked to, like, teachers about it, you know, I talked to Dr. Seppi before she left, because we started to, you know, kind of formulate that idea before she left, about, you know, okay, so if we create, like, a homeroom space for everybody to go to, how does that work? Well, then it turns into, like, you know, if your homeroom is with, you know, a ninth-grade teacher, but, because it's high school, you're in a 10th-grade math class, well, I now need to get a pass to go from that ninth-grade homeroom. So we thought it might be a little inhibited, inhibiting to students to be able to go to meet with who they need to meet with and to account for them, you know, like, so if you create the homeroom, you're now taking attendance, you're doing that kind of stuff. And, you know, just, it might, like, if it's 10 minutes, it really slows down that whole process of them getting to where they need to go. So we did think about that and try and understand, like, what, you know, what, what would happen? And the thought was, okay, let's see how this works, and then we could always look at, at, you know, what adjustments we might be able to make moving forward.
And, and if I'm remembering correctly, and maybe my, my memory is off, the bell schedule, there used to be possibly two days, it was a six, it's not six anymore, it's a fixed five-day schedule?
Yes, and that also was that, you know, that was a COVID kind of change that came about. And it really had to do with when we had, like, half the building in one day and half the building in the other day. We started to try and think, like, okay, how do we do this? You know, like, because if you're in an even day and they're in an odd day, you know, so really changed, it created us, it created a change in our schedule. And then at the end of it, we were like, this is pretty good. Why, why would we go to a six-day rotating schedule? You know, and, you know, and imagine the six-day rotating schedule, it's not neat, right? Because, you know, well, Monday's a nine-period day, next, next week, you know, what's, and, you know, now people have to try and figure out, and there's, there could be confusion on, oh, I thought it was an even block day and not an odd block day. And then throw in, like, if there's a snow day in there, I don't know if we'll have snow days anymore, but if there's a snow day in there, you know, you bump the schedule, we don't do that anymore. So if there's a day off, you know, that day is dropped and we go on to the next day. So it's just created a lot more consistency for the students and for the teachers.
Sometimes simpler is better.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, it's true. And it took us a while to get to that, and it took a pandemic, you know, I, like, I mean, we're probably pretty brilliant people, right? We can see, like, why we didn't see that earlier, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, the only thing I wanted to add was, I would hope that I never sit here or in the audience and hear you say, we're good, we're, we're done. We have done a great job, we're done. What I heard from both you and Letitia tonight was that learning is an ongoing thing, that, that new things happen, new things happen in our world, new things happen in our community, new things happen in our schools, in our families. And we are constantly changing and adjusting. To me, that is what education is. And so I'm happy that things are new. I'm happy that things are different. I'm happy that unexpected, unintended consequences of this have caused us to think about this and that we move that way. Like, I always want us moving, I don't want you ever to get to the top. You're just going to keep piling stuff on, so you have to keep going. Because to me, that's, that's the way to model for students what, what learning is all about. And you should be learning your whole life, not just through 12th grade or college. So, thank you.
Yeah, you know, and that's a reflective piece. I think, you know, if you're, I just, like, you should always be reflecting on what you're doing and what you could do better, right? I think that's, that's always one of those things that, you know, we do. And I'd love to sit here and be like, oh, you know, it's all because of me. But the staff always comes up to us and is always like, hey, what about this? What about that? You know, Mr. Furi's, you know, his ideas with Real World Finance and with, you know, the design course for IB, you know, that wasn't us going to Mr. Furi and being like, hey, we need to change things up. That's Mr. Furi looking at what's going on in our school and also in the world and trying to develop a better plan, you know, for our students. So it's an amazing staff that is constantly, constantly, constantly looking at things and the way that we do them and wanting to change it. I mean, you know, I got, you know, there's teachers talking about coming up with a rotating, you know, schedule. You know, like, they're still looking at the schedule, you know, in the midst of all this and other ways that you might be able to improve things. So I would like to be like, you know, hey, you know, I'm the principal, it's all because of me that this is all happening. It's amazing, amazing staff that we have here that is constantly working on how do we improve things for our students and our community? And, you know, I just get to be the one that comes up here and says, hey, we got a great new program coming in, you know? Good me.
So I want to quickly thank you both for doing an excellent job in capturing what I think is the essence of Putna Valley High School and really acknowledging all the amazing work that's happening there on a daily basis. Your presentation reminds me of what the district vision is, student first and foremost, building a foundation for the future. And just to highlight what your presentation captured in the skills that we are instilling in students to ensure that we are setting them up to be successful in their future endeavors, right? We talked about transitions of students, supporting those transitions and the importance of such, empowerment, student voice. Today's students, tomorrow's teachers, recognizing the path through the Vietnam Memorial, community service through Science Honor Society and the Community Service Program, the importance of a student support period in the beginning of the day, which you know that I love. And having an opportunity for, I think the most profound piece of that is, what was one, what was built with an idea of academic support very much turned into an opportunity for social-emotional support for many of our students, which was a wonderful thing to hear and certainly, I hope, a great service to our students. I don't want to discredit the fact that we are in the process of eradicating senioritis. My most, what I like to brag the most about when we talk about the success of our IB program is not the number of IB diploma graduates, as impressive as that is, especially as it compares to some of our neighbors. But more importantly, the number of high school seniors that opt to take a second-year IB course to sit for an IB exam after they've been accepted into college. As a former teacher of many high school seniors, I understand what a year-long battle it is for students that already know that they've been accepted into college. But I think by challenging students, making them feel successful in the 11th-grade IB English class, providing them students for, opportunities for college credit. I love the fact that Robin Vin went and got DCC accreditation for their course and offered students the opportunity for that. I think we've profoundly changed the academic rigor we offer our students. And I think when students are challenged and find success in that challenge, that, that encourages them to continue to challenge themselves. And I think the slide you showed of the number of AP and IB exams we have is a testament to the work of the teachers and certainly a credit to the efforts of our students to be able to challenge themselves to make sure that they are well-prepared to go into their college. So I cannot thank you two enough. I cannot thank all our teacher colleagues, support staff, and I can't thank our teacher, our students enough for taking on those challenges and really helping bring Putna Valley to where it is today. So, thank you all.
Thank all, thank all of you. Really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Dr. Luft, I think, isn't Garrison's board meeting this week?
Yeah, they're meeting, they're meeting tomorrow.
So we should send them the first part of this meeting so they can get the full, a different presentation. It's probably got a lot of the same stuff in it, but, you know, the questions might be different, maybe now that they've come and they've visited and now they see that, just maybe they, be, benefit to their students as much as we're as lucky for our students to have this, this program.
Sure, I'd be happy to share that. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in my superintendent's report.
Didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No worries.
Okay.
Sorry, real quick, are you guys going to transition? Because that'd be a good time.
Can I?
No.
Nope, okay. All right, so our next presentation of the evening is going to be a first reading for admission for non-resident students. So I guess I'll, I'll lighten the, the background real quick, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Doherty to talk a little bit more about this. So this policy speaks to tuition of non-resident students into the district. It was a policy that was last revised in 2010. So we've had a couple individual instances emerge over the last couple of years. Obviously, the potential contract with Garrison changed some of this language. So it was really an opportunity for us to take a fresh look at this contract, I mean, at this policy. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Doherty to speak a little bit about some of the revisions that are being proposed to our mission of non-resident students policy.
Sure.
So again, to your point, it really breaks up any non-resident students, and that can be somebody that we're accepting into the district and for tuition purposes, like from another district for one of our specialized programs. It really just defines what that non-resident student looks like and offering tuition from other districts, tuition paying from students. It gives the Board of Education and myself and Dr. Luft the authority to make determinations to accept tuition paying students. Then there's another layer of non-resident students, say if a student moves in the middle of the year. I often, our old policy really was such a broad stroke that it was, it was really, it didn't define when a student could stay and how long they could stay. We've had very clear practices, but our policy, this policy really defines when a student can, how long a student can stay, not paying tuition if they move. This policy outlines that they can stay till the end of the semester of, that they move, they have to provide their own transportation. It also gives us the authority to allow seniors, providing that they're in good standing and expected to graduate in their senior year, and providing their own transportation, allowing them to continue their final year here. Some other pointers are really just any future students, very often, again, I have very clear practices, but this policy as the final decision maker for all residency cases, which is the authority that the board gives me, I'm, I've had clear practices. This really outlines, for example, another thing it outlines is if a family signs a contract and they're in contract to either build a home or to buy a home, they have a certain amount of time designated to have that contract. If they don't and they go beyond that time, we then can start to charge them tuition. Instead of me just saying like, this is my rule, this is the district's rule, this really policy really guides my work. So, so those are, any questions?
No, I think the policy really puts the focus on students.
It does.
Which is what we want, but also protects the district from, you know, financial and other kind of liabilities. So, and I think it, it makes it really clear, you know, how important we feel this issue is. So I'm glad with the changes.
I think COVID, again, sort of going back to COVID, we've had a large amount of movement throughout this entire region, so it's brought up more cases than ever before. There's always been a few cases every year, but now, over the past couple of years, it really, it became a challenge, quite frankly, to manage that. And it's very helpful as a district representative that to have clear guidelines.
So the first reading will come up under our new business for the board to accept it. And then obviously, there'll be a second reading. So if there's any questions in the meantime, just capture those and we can discuss them during the second reading, after which, policy will become adopted.
And is the draft policy on the website?
Yes.
For community members, if they have come? Okay. Okay, so we're moving into reports. So, student, do you have a report?
Um, we have some pretty, a lot of the stuff was covered by Mr. Mello and Dr. Payne regarding things like color wars and that going really well, especially after three years of not having our.
They didn't tell who won.
We won. Oh, yes, seniors won, of course, of course, of course. My pie eating contest contributed to the story.
There might have been little shenanigans going on. I was watching the feed, I don't know.
The big controversy is that the freshmen finished second. That was very interesting.
That is a big controversy. Simone did place first in the pie eating contest, though, so big shout out.
All right.
Yes. Also, we did have a couple of questions about snow days, but we can, I can address that after we finish this report, but.
It's not going to snow this year.
No, no, no.
Except for on the ski mountain where it's going to snow every day. Okay, you have questions, you can ask them. If I don't know the answer, I'll tell you I don't know the answer.
Yeah, snow days, like, are we maintaining the same, like, protocol for snow days where we don't have any like asynchronous learning or like virtual learning and things like that?
So our plan are to honor snow days as in traditional snow days. There would be no expectation for remote instruction for at least the six snow days that are built into the calendar.
Lovely.
Is that the right answer?
Yes, absolutely, that's perfect. Check. Yeah, but a lot of seniors are either starting to apply for their early decision or early action, applications for college, or other students are kind of figuring out their situations if they're doing trade schools and things like that. So I think that's going really well and our guidance department's really being very supportive about having kind of meetings and meeting especially like teachers like Mr. Scampoli, at least in my experience, have been very supportive in our journeys after high school. Our fall sports are ending now, a lot of our teams, like field hockey, our volleyball team. Yeah, seems like those were going into sectional play, so those teams are doing really well, so we're glad about that. And we're also moving into our winter sports season where we typically have a good amount of success, so.
Is there any extra? Do you want to tell us about the volleyball team or the field hockey team?
Field hockey team actually just won yesterday. They won 5-0 to Havel. They won against Ohio, 5-0. Amazing game, they played really hard, so I personally think that they're going to go very far into the sectional play, if not take it all.
The number one seed did lose and we are seeded second, so that is a positive view of the outcome of our sectional.
Absolutely. In terms of the volleyball team, we won the league for the second time in school history this past, in the last week or so. So we are league champions for 2022. Our setter also just got her 1,000th assist and she's surpassed that. So that's also the second record in the school history and also just got the record for most number of assists per one season. So our team is making a lot of big marks on the records for our district. So, yeah, that's all about I have.
Well, congratulations, all of you, and thank you very much. It's wonderful to have you guys at the meeting, for sure. All right, so I'll jump into my report. Wait one minute. All right, so I do want to recognize that this month is actually School Board Recognition Month. So I wanted to recognize our five unpaid board members who volunteer their time to sit here every two weeks, really for the betterment of our school district and our students and to ensure that all students in Putnam Valley have the opportunity to a top notch education. So I thank you all. I'm going to read a little, some excerpts from New York State proclamation. So each year, School Board Recognition Week, Center of Month, is observed by more than 700 school boards in New York districts, districts across New York State. Our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become informed, productive contributors to society in an ever-changing world. Members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning and community and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence and progress in education, recognizing that all children can be successful learners. And finally, the members of New York State's local school boards respond to educational needs of the community they serve and help ensure a solid foundation of our school system. In doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's education system and improve future prospects for our children. So thank you all very much for the service you provide our community, our district and our students. I know that Ms. Levine had bought everyone some, some little treats.
Yes.
We bought treats that Ms. Levine picked up, I'm being told. But again, obviously, you know the gratitude that I have for each of you, but I hope you recognize that gratitude extends far beyond myself. So thank you all for the service you provide this community. Our next recognition this month is also National Building Principals Month. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mello left, but I did want to take just this opportunity to acknowledge having the privilege to work alongside three outstanding building principals to provide the services we have for our students in our buildings and leadership to continue to move Putnam Valley forward. So thank each of them for the service they provide. I know we already recognized, but I did want to again, recognize our board reps. I'm not sure the last time we had three board reps at one meeting, but it's very exciting. You guys will get used to the fact, every time there's a question, everyone's going to stare at you, because really they just want to hear what you have to say. But again, thank you and looking forward to working with you for the remainder of the school year. And some exciting news, I was, hopefully I was going to grab the teachers before they left for this piece. New York State released their comparison data for the 3-8 assessments. And there's some really exciting information that we shared, that we received today. So I just want to highlight some, obviously, these are not all of them, but some of the highlights of the New York State assessment data, again, grades 3 through 8, ELA in math primarily, although I will give a shout out to science as well, which our students do very well. So our third grade ELA students performed in the top 5% of all students across New York State. And in math, third grade performed in the top 3%, so better than 97% of students across New York State on the third grade math assessment. And actually, our third grade teachers ranked number one in our region. So that's the entire Putnam, Northern Westchester region of 18 schools. Our third grade math results were first in the region.
Oh, nice.
Wow. For fourth grade ELA, our students performed in the top 7% of the state, in fourth grade math in the top 6% in the state. And our fourth grade, fourth graders ranked number three in the region for ELA and number two in the region for our math results. In fifth grade, our math performance was in the top 4% in New York State, and that ranked number three in our region. And in sixth grade, our ELA performance was in the top 5%. Our sixth grade math performance was in the top 7% and ranked third, and we ranked third for ELA in our region. So I know that I continually brag about the service that Putnam Valley was able to provide to its students during the pandemic. I continually thank the efforts of our teachers, our support staff, our administrators. We were able to do things that many districts around us were not able to do in terms of welcoming back a vast majority of our students five days a week. I know many of our teachers struggled when their own kids were not in school, but yet they were here five days a week teaching the students of Putnam Valley. And I think these numbers are a testament to the hard work of these individuals throughout the pandemic to ensure that students of Putnam Valley continue to learn. And I was thrilled to see how well we performed, because I really think it honors the efforts that were put forth during a very challenging time by our teachers. So, thank you all. Sorry you know we're here to hear it, but I did want to say when you were here.
They would have liked that.
Well, I was trying. But again, I couldn't be more proud of what we were able to do as a district. And again, kudos to everyone who is involved.
Especially on the heels of the gloom and doom and all the reports that have been surfacing this week from all kinds of media, like how poorly students have been in assessments.
So we talked a little bit about the Garrison School District. The contract with the Garrison School District will be on our board agenda for new business this evening. I know the Garrison School Board is meeting tomorrow, so I would expect the contract to be on their board agenda tomorrow. Once those contracts are ratified, our next step will be to schedule a parent evening. So we're targeting right now November 15th to invite any interested parents and students from the Garrison School District to come here to, for a presentation and to view our grounds. Looking at our student reps, you know, we'll be reaching out for some students to participate in that because obviously the students are going to want to hear from our students more so than, than myself and Mr. Mello. So that's the first step. The next piece will be interested students will have an opportunity to come visit the school during the school day. So we imagine mimicking something very similar to our Big Brothers program for transitioning in eighth grade students. We would use that same sort of framework to welcome however many Garrison students are interested.
What time are you envisioning the parent presentation to begin? In the evening, 6 o'clock?
Yes, we would do in the evening. We don't have a time yet, but I would guess 6 o'clock. I want to give people an opportunity to get home and get over here. We want to make sure we're maximizing access to it for those who are interested. I do want to keep it all in perspective, Garrison School District class sizes are typically between 20 and 30 students. Those students have a choice between three high schools, O'Neill in Highland Falls, Haldane in Cold Spring, and now hopefully, Putnam Valley. So just to keep our, our prospects in check, right? I would love to have a couple of students attend the first year and I would hope that those students feel successful, then maybe more students will follow. But obviously, we're not expecting a profound increase in the number of students that we will all of a sudden have. The reality is, is we lost 20 students from last year to this year. We graduated 155, right? We didn't bring in 155. So our high school enrollment is slowly dwindling, so we would welcome any additional students to come in and really take advantage of the fabulous academic program we have to offer. So more to come on that, but that's obviously some information that is out in the community. I wanted to provide some more detail. I had the opportunity to attend the iconic Bridge Overpass naming ceremony. So it's actually now officially named by, by law, the Putnam Valley First Responders' Bridge. And the name of the bridge, I know Sam was there as well, acknowledges the fact for many years, our first responders in fire trucks and ambulances, and I would even extend it to, not that we're first responders, but school buses were forced to cross the iconic State Parkway, four lanes of traffic, with very little of a median for many years. And now this bridge provides school buses and first responders safe passage to the Roy and Broe community. So I thought it was a fantastic choice in name and had the opportunity to go there. Some of our first responders were there and really recognized those efforts. We held our district advisory council meeting. So this is a continuation for a committee that started last school year. And some of the work we did was completing our communications work from last school year, beginning work on our core values in our next school, in our next scheduled meeting, and then identifying new goals and priorities for our work moving forward. We had an administrative team meeting. David Shaw, the district's attorneys, came and presented on Title IX regulations. We had our IB information evening. It was very well attended. There was Putnam Valley parents and students, and as I had mentioned earlier, a few Garrison parents were interested enough to come and check out the IB information evening. Then a little look forward, tomorrow, we have our first first responders appreciation event. So we have classroom visits scheduled at Putnam Valley Elementary School beginning at 9:00 AM. We have our equipment and apparatus event scheduled outside the middle school, but it's open to high school students as well, beginning at the lunch periods shortly after 10:30. Now, we're hoping that the weather holds out. And on Friday, October 28th, we have our first responders appreciation before our football game. They'll have the opportunity to walk down the hill. We have our Putnam Valley Fire Department is providing their color guard. I believe temperamentals will be singing the national anthem and really just an opportunity for some of the many first responders living or working in the Putnam Valley community to be recognized. I think we heard a lot about color wars. It's always one of the most nerve wracking and exciting days of the year. Continually be impressed by the ability to transform our hallways and fishbowls into oasis. I was taking pictures and sent them to some of my superintendent colleagues. They were like, where are you? I'm like, that's my high school. They were like, what? We don't let our kids do fun stuff like that. So it's, it's a wonderful tradition and I love seeing the outcome of it each year. Some events, well, Putnam Valley Education Foundation held their color run, which again was well attended. I always seem to get doused by more color than anybody else. I try not to take any personal offense to it, but students and adults alike apparently like throwing it on me. And the Putnam Valley Education Foundation has their trunk and/or treat event coming up on Sunday, October 30th here on campus. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to new business. Number one, please.
Resolved upon the recommendation, the superintendent schools enter into an agreement for the education of secondary students from Garrison Union Free School District as per document number 123 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. Number two, please.
Whereas the well pump at the Putnam Valley Elementary School reached the end of its useful life, and whereas the leaks that occurred suddenly and the failure of the pump caused by possible electrical surges were. caused by possible electrical surges were both unanticipated. Whereas in the interest of safety and due to the lack of water at the elementary school, the district had to send students home on an early dismissal on Thursday, October 6th. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education declares the repairs and the replacement of the well pump at the Putnam Valley Elementary School to be considered an emergency. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorize the repairs and the replacement of the well pump at the Putnam Valley Elementary School as an ordinary contingent expense of the Board. Be it further resolved that it is in the best interest of the district to appropriate up to $25,000 of funds in the district's 2022-23 budget or unappropriated fund balance or a combination thereof to pay the cost of the repairs and the well pump replacement. And be it further resolved that the Board authorizes a corresponding increase or so much therefore as is necessary in the amount of the district budget for the 2022-23 school year and fiscal year to satisfy this obligation and determines that such amount is hereby appropriated therefore.
Second. Questions or comments?
So that's a lot of words, but really what it means is that because it was an emergency condition, the money had to be expended without going through the typical approval process for purchase orders. So you'll be happy to know that although $25,000 up to was appropriated, the replacement expense was far less. And I do want to, I guess, sort of apologize and thank at the same time, parents, right, that was a pretty chaotic situation. We have almost 600 students in our elementary school. They had just arrived on campus when the issue was identified. And 600 students without flushing toilets could become an issue quickly. The other side of it is you can't send home 600 elementary school students without providing parents appropriate notice to arrange for essentially one adult has to be at every bus stop for those children to get off the bus. And I can only imagine as a parent of an elementary school each student, how chaotic that was for our community. I believe we gave them 52 minutes notice before we were dismissing the students. But I was actually amazed. The number of students that came back to the elementary school was far fewer than I had imagined. I do want to thank members of our support staff and teaching staff at the elementary school who stuck around just to make sure we had coverage for those students who did come back to the building. And it really, what it could have been a very chaotic time really ended up working out very smoothly considering the fact that so little notice was provided and you can only have so many people in the building without working facilities. So I apologize, but I thank you for allowing that transition to happen so quickly. And hopefully it doesn't happen again, although I think last time it happened was seven years ago to the date I found out, which is a little bit weird. So we should have at least seven years before it happens again.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Regina Denike to a provisional appointment, provisional, excuse me, appointment as a public relations assistant effective September 30th of 2022 at the district office on September 9th of the CSEA salary schedule effective September 1st of 2022.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to clarify that this is a reclassification of a current employee. So this is not a new position. It's not vacating a position that will then be filled. It's just a reclassification of an individual, Jeannie, who is already employed by the district into a new title.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the first reading of revised policy 5152, admission to non-resident students as per document number 102-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd like to open it up for public comments on any topic. We only have one public.
What happened to the 15?
No? Okay, upcoming meeting topics and presentations.
So our next board meeting is scheduled for November 17th. Under our administrative reports, we have our technology department and our operations department as well as Putnam Northern Westchester Students of Distinction Recognition planned for November 17th. Then the meeting after that is December 15th, where we have our pupil personnel services as well as our athletics department presenting.
Okay, any board members have anything who wants to add to that?
I have a couple of questions regarding, oh, are we done there?
Okay.
Okay, Garrison. So do they currently have the courses for the IB path for the middle school math?
Yes, Garrison students in eighth grade, all eighth grade students in Garrison take the algebra regions. So anybody who comes over would be in the traditional path. If it's a new student who maybe is missing that, they would have to fall into the secondary path that we have here at the high school where they'd have to double up in math one year. But as a sort of part of their academic program is algebra for all students in eighth grade.
And transportation is paid for by Garrison?
100%, yes.
Okay, I just make sure the public knows that. And, and like as you noted, they only have 20 to 30 students in a class. So divided by three, it may be it's not a large amount of students that would be potentially, well, it could be 20 to 30, but so.
Right, I mean, I think the reality is, is there's certainly legacy factors in place, right? Some of these students have older siblings already in O'Neill or in Haldane. The Garrison community and the Haldane community are very intertwined. From an athletics standpoint, they have combined modified teams. So I don't anticipate there being any profound change in the number of students who typically go to Haldane, go into Haldane, and typically go to O'Neill, go to O'Neill. But I'm optimistic that we, Putnam Valley offers some very specialized programs that may be the right fit for some students. And I think if we get a couple this year and they find, hey, having a successful experience, that the word will spread and they'll have siblings and, and we'll figure out how, how high that number may go. But I think we have a lot to offer and I'm hopeful that at least a couple of families in Garrison take us up on that offer and, and take advantage of what we have.
I did watch the board meeting. I do recommend everyone to watch it. It makes you feel very proud of this school, so it's great. One thing they brought up a couple of times was the sports feeder program and how a lot of the kids play, for example, in Phillips Town and go to the Parks and Rec. Is there, do we offer any opportunity for those kids, and I know this is off-topic for our schools, but to come into the Putnam Valley Parks and Rec if they want to start that path? Like, there was a lot of talk about sports and the twoing with the sports that the students, they continue to play with.
I mean, I can't speak to specific Parks and Rec functions. I can speak to, I mean, as many know, I'm currently coaching the fifth and sixth grade football team through the Putnam Valley Football Club. And while that's a private entity and doesn't go through the Parks and Rec, there's students from, my own son will go to Panis, he's on there. There are several students that will go to Hen Hut when they grow up and they're on there. So that opportunity would certainly be open to students from Garrison if they wanted to do that.
The policy for Park and Rec is among the commission is if you attend school, the district school, all the programs are open to the child regardless. So if you're in Putnam Valley schools, you can come on the Park and Recs, no problem. Or if you're a resident and attend, let's say, a parochial school or something like that, that's okay too.
Thank you.
We have one last question about the Garrison agreement. So are these children from Garrison, are they transitioning during their middle school years or their high school years, or do they have the opportunity to do both?
So the answer is the opportunity to do both. Once our contract is signed, it would afford the opportunity for any Garrison student, regardless if they're currently attending another high school. The option to attend Putnam Valley, I believe that's always been their system. So if you do a couple of years in Haldane and you decide it wasn't for you, maybe you go to O'Neill for your last two years. I don't know how much transition actually happens there, but I do know that it is an option. So it's entirely possible that we could get, I mean, an upperclassman, maybe an incoming 11th grader who really wants to pursue an IB diploma, maybe an all-state volleyball player. I mean, I don't know if they have one of those, but if they do, maybe they want to come here. So yeah, it's, obviously we're, it's very much geared towards incoming ninth grade students, but there would certainly be an opportunity for students in other grade levels to take advantage of this newly formed partnership.
But not at the middle school level, right?
No, no, only, not, oh, sorry, not in middle school, only.
Nine up.
Yes, nine up. So not only ninth graders, but ninth through 12th graders, not, not middle school.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed that.
Also, this would be taking, if the agreement goes through, this would be taking place in the 23, 24 school year and on?
Correct.
So to piggyback on that, I'm looking at their board docs right now. And I don't know if they've made a mistake, but they've got Haldane and, and our contract up there. And what they have for us is a one-year contract.
So, yeah, so the reason why there's a one-year contract for Putnam Valley, we sort of, we need a placeholder for, for the upcoming school year. The way it works in educational law, if you approve, if you want a multi-year contract, it has to be identified in your school budget vote in May. So what will happen is the board can agree to a one-year contract with us for next school year now. So that's done and guaranteed. They'll budget within their school budget for a five-year contract with Putnam Valley. Same conditions, just a multi-year contract. Once their school budget passes, they'll be able to then sign onto a five-year contract with Putnam Valley, which will take us through the full term. So it's a little quirky how the educational law works, but we have to start with a one. So, so they make their decisions in December.
Sure.
They let us know by January, so it'll be way before their school budget vote. Once their school budget vote passes and the money's allocated in there for Putnam Valley, then we'll have a successor agreement, which will be a five-year agreement.
Because I had read that Haldane's new agreement with them was not for five years, but for an extension. But their contract that they're looking to approve is July 2022 to June 2027. Then they have an executive session to discuss the contract. So I just, in case you've not looked here, I just wanted to let you know that's what's here.
Yeah, so my understanding is they already have agreements within, they already have the money allocated within their budget for long-term contracts with O'Neill and Haldane, so they don't need to wait for that like they do for Putnam Valley, which is a new expenditure for them. There was actually one statistic that I skipped over before, so I do want to recognize that our eighth grade students who take the algebra regions are actually in the top, again, they rank one because 100% of them scored three or higher, so I do want to recognize that.
And is that region, is that region just Putnam County or is that the Northern Westchester Bocys region?
Yes, PNW Bocys region, the 18 schools is sort of what we use as our regional comparison. So Chappaqua, Briar Cliff, Croton.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, Emily?
We forgot a statistic as well, and our boys and girls cross-country team won leagues.
Nice.
I think individual and teams. They won both.
There is a play next weekend. There is a play, our drama's next weekend.
Following weekend, fourth and fifth.
November, yeah.
Project Larm.
Which is, yeah.
Two points before our next board meeting.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, right.
I haven't gotten anything about tickets. Have you?
They sent an email, Dr. Lucero sent an email.
Today?
No, last week.
I did not get it. I'm going to tell him.
Got it. More to come. Maybe he's spam.
Yeah, I'll check my spam pool. Okay, anything else? Okay, I'd like a motion to adjourn the business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Happy Halloween.
Yep.